The Town of Plainville. Established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
First, let me say to the audience that's here. This part of our meeting is a work session with the Dog Park Committee and the Town Council. During this time, the committee is going to present their ideas for what they've put together regarding what they would like to see if there were a dog park in Plainville. During this time, we are not going to have comments from the audience. This is an opportunity for the council to talk to the committee. The council will at some point decide if they want to hold a public hearing at a future date, and at that time, we would welcome other comments from the public regarding a dog park and any proposals that are going to be considered. So just wanted to let everybody know that I'm -- we're not trying to not listen to everybody, but the purpose is to listen to the committee, to get feedback from them, for the council to ask any questions they may have, and then we'll consider if we're going to have a public hearing at some point down the road. Okay? All right. So Danny, you're going to start. We would appreciate that, and you introduce your committee members that are here tonight.
Madam Chairman, council members, Mr. Lee, thank you for this opportunity to come in front of you and speak on behalf of the Plainville Dog Park. We hope that this is informational for everyone and that you learn something about what we've done and where we want to go with the dog park. I'd like to introduce the committee members. Scott Adamson, Stan Bojanowski, Pam Chamberlain, Amanda Legassi, Doreen Raymond, and a special intention to Jennifer Dahlstrom, who helped us put this PowerPoint together. So thank all these people and appreciate it and all the support that we've gotten. So we're going to start with Plainville Dog Park, and this is a proposal and information session. Hopefully, we give you some information, we get some answers, we get some questions, get some answers. To begin with, the history and background. In 2000, the Plainville Town Council developed and adapted a master plan for the Park and Recreation Department to include a dog park. In February 2016, the Park and Recreation Board appointed eight residents to the Dog Park Committee. The committee was asked to come up with a proposal for a dog park in Plainville. What is a dog park? A dog park is typically a public park that is fenced in, and dogs can play together and run around without leashes. It allows dogs to socialize with other dogs in a safe place. What does a dog park look like? We have a five to six-minute video that was created and produced by dog park volunteer Karen and Greg with their two daughters and their family pet Sam. The video will give you some insight of what several dog parks look like and show dogs at play. We have footage from Bristol, Southington, Rocky Hill, Cheshire, and Glastonbury dog parks to give you some broad perspective of what the dog parks look like. So on with the show.
All the way. Come on. Good boy. How old are you?
Hello, puppy. Hello.
This might help. Good boy.
So it's a gentleman was waiting. Gone is this gate to the left to close before he opened the other gate so that just in case the white dog, the husky, got through, it wouldn't get out. Uh-oh, here we go. Dogs playing. This is about what you normally see at a dog park where the dogs start to interact and they figure out who's who and talk and play and have a ball. This gets their energy out, lets them have a good time. And most dog owners usually know that wagging tails and a little bit of talking back and forth just to play, that means that they're in good spirits and doing well.
Using the bathroom there where the owner should be cleaning up. On a responsibly picking up the poop and making sure, making sure it gets all the poop off the grass so that other dogs don't step on it. So this is the Bark Park, also known as the Bristol Dog Park. So these are the rules, and I didn't know there was rules in dog parks, so put that there. And then there's dogs only, dogs under 12 pounds only in this area. So this is the small dog park. As you can see, this is the small dog park. So this is the little area where they could let their dogs go and unleash, okay?
You have a bullpen area again, a couple of benches, a fire hydrant, very necessary, and poopy bag station. There is no one in the area at this time, but it's a similar setup to Cheshire.
I'd like to acknowledge Greg and Karen over here, who put that together. Thank you.
Nice job. Nice job.
Now that we know, we've seen a little bit about what a dog park looks like, what I'd like to go into the benefits of a dog park. According to sources, there are over 2,000 dog parks in the United States. The American Kennel Club cites that cities are becoming more and more populated and leash laws are becoming more restrictive. A dog park allows owners to spend time with their dogs in a safe place. Dog parks are normally managed by park users and in conjunction with town or city officials. More than just a room to roam, the creation of a dog park allows dogs to socialize safely. Dog parks are a great place for owners to meet other people with common interests. More community benefit. Dog parks allow dogs to run around safely without endangering themselves. The National Park and Recreation Department reports that designating an area for dogs to socialize and play has decreased the number of complaints to town and city officials across the U.S., easing the burden of enforcement on animal control officers. Dog parks prevent off-leash animals from infringing on the rights of other community members and park users such as joggers, small children, and those that are fearful of dogs. Residents that use dog parks are self-policing, self-policing as to maintain the environment, picking up waste, monitoring their dog behavior, et cetera. Well-exercised dogs are better neighbors who are less likely to create a nuisance, bark excessively, and destroy property. The dog presence in the park has been reported to deter crime. Another reason for dog park is to accommodate senior citizens and the disabled who cannot always walk their dog on a leash. Those are some of the benefits of the dog park, and when you do any kind of research on dog parks, the lists kind of goes on endlessly, from the AMA, American Medical Association, citing reasons for dogs and the benefit to humans, et cetera, et cetera. So what is our mission? The dog park mission is to create a fenced-in, off-leash dog park where well-behaved dogs, under the supervision of their owners, can exercise in a clean, safe environment without endangering people and other property. Dog park interest. Over 300 Plainville residents recently signed a petition supporting a dog park to be developed at Norton Place Extension. Dog park's responsibility. The responsibility of the dog park should be outlined in a memo of understanding, an MOU, between town agencies and a dog park. This understanding should include the chain of command, reporting relationships, duties and responsibilities of those involved with the dog park. Town responsibility. The town responsibility will be part of the memo of understanding to include grass cutting, tree trimming, order supplies for the park including waste bags, mulch, et cetera, scheduled dumpsters or porta potty cleaning, and other maintenance as required. Town liability. The town liability will be determined by the Town Council, Town Attorney, and insurance underwriters. Local cities and towns in Connecticut that have dog parks maintain that dog owners are responsible for their dogs and are held strictly liable for any damages caused by their dogs, irrespective of whether the owner was negligent in controlling the dog. Dog park sites. The committee was tasked with evaluating six possible town-owned sites. Norton Park, Brown Picnic Area, Norton Park across from the municipal garage, Robert Street Extension, Norton Place Extension, Patruski Park, Diamond Avenue. Dog park site selection. After identifying and discussing the pros and cons of each site with town officials and town residents, our recommendation is to create a dog park at the end of the cul-de-sac at Norton Place Extension. Advantages of Norton Place Extension include: the site is owned by the Town of Plainville; there's minimal development cost; sufficient parking in the cul-de-sac area; remote from traffic and distractions; there's water availability; and an optimal use of the floodplain area. Development plan. Our desire to create approximately one acre off-leash park where well-behaved dogs can exercise and romp in a closed, safe, clean, and monitored area. The dog park will be double gated with two sections. One for larger dogs and the other for smaller and timid dogs. The park would be constructed in phases with amenities added as monies from fundraising become available. The initial phase of construction would include fencing, gating, rule board, information signage, drinking water access, and handicapped accessibility. In addition, we will buffer the north side of the dog park to prevent, to protect the privacy and property of the neighbors and to mitigate any noise from the park. We want to be a good neighbor to the people around our area. In subsequent phases, we could add park benches, plantings, a perimeter walk area, and possibly a dog wash. The annual cost on this is yet to be determined. Dog park funding. Funding will be done through several methods. One, donations, fundraising, direct solicitation of local businesses, and grant requests. Dog park rules. Like anything else, we need to have rules. The Town of Plainville is not responsible and shall have no liability for the acts or admissions of individuals or other animals that utilize a dog park. Owners are responsible for any injury and damage caused by your dog. Dogs must wear a valid rabies tag. All dogs must be up to date in all immunizations. Owners will be fined for non-compliance. Children under the age of, at this point, 12 are not allowed in the fenced-in area for health and safety reasons. Your dog must be within view and under voice control at all times. You must clean up after your dog. All waste will be placed in the proper receptacles. Immediately fill in any holes your dog creates. Aggressive dogs are not allowed in the park. Female dogs in heat, sick, or injured dogs, less than six months old, should not be brought into the park. Dog owners must carry a leash at all times. Leash your dog when entering and exiting the park immediately upon signs of aggression or bad conduct of your dog. No smoking, no food included, including dog treats. Alcohol is not permitted. No spike, prong, choke, or training collars are allowed on the dog. All visitors must act responsibly and respectfully to other visitors. Bicycle skateboards not permitted. Park hours are dawn to dusk. Noise in dog park. Noise studies at other dog parks demonstrated noise level to be minimal. Observations noted that most often dogs do not bark while play. They are too busy playing. Dogs that bark did so for a short period of time. Interestingly, the study showed that the loudest barking was from dogs in confined yards neighboring the dog parks. Other information. Plainville has approximately 2,000 registered dogs. A population of approximately 18,000 people, that's one dog for every nine residents. It is estimated that 78 million dogs are owned in the United States. Approximately 44% of all households in the U.S. have a dog. It is also estimated that 38 million families in the U.S. with children and 43 million families with dogs. Property values near dog parks increase, sometimes significantly, according to the WorthingtonDogPark.com. Woof. The more parks a city has, the higher property values tend to be. Dog parks have become sought-after amenities among people relocated to a community. Dog parks often assist in reducing crime. In one comment from a police chief, he said, "Since the dog park was open, we have seen a significant drop in costs for suspicious persons or activities in the park." Thank you for listening. Thank you for being part of our presentation. We respect yours and appreciate your sport. And questions coming? Hearing none, I guess.
Did you want to go over that dog park estimated cost?
Oh yeah, I'm sorry. I wanted to do that.
You got it. I know you were so happy to just thank us.
Yeah. This estimate was done some time ago. It was actually, I believe, done before we even established the committee. This was one of the first things that was put together, and you see the bottom line is 22,000. It's more likely that the estimate is somewhere between 25,000 and 30,000, what our rough guess is now. The real next steps that we need to do, if we get approved, is going into a design phase. We need to go in and design what the dog park's going to look like, and then we need a rendering of that dog park. Once we have a design, then we can take that design to the appropriate people and say, "Okay, here's what we have in mind. Cost it out for us. Let's see what it is. Let's see what the numbers come to." What you have here is about almost 1,100 feet of fence. That incorporates a full acre of dog park split between the small dogs and the large dogs. You have three maintenance, two maintenance gates. Those are the 10-foot gates that it's speaking to. Those 10-foot gates are for the town to be able to get in their tractors and mow the lawn and do that. There are three pedestrian gates. One pedestrian gate gets you into the bullpen, and then once you're in the bullpen, you close the door. There are two pedestrian gates, one to let you into the little dog park, one lets you into the big dog park. So your biggest expense here is really the fencing, the gating, that type of thing. And there are a few other items on here, but if you're asking, we're talking roughly $25,000 to $30,000 now, subject to design, subject to a rendering, and subject to somebody taking another look at it. So I didn't mean to gloss over it.
Yeah, that was something we were interested in.
Yeah, yeah.
As you are.
Well, what we're looking for, whatever this is, we're looking to do the fundraising, donations, fundraising, solicitation, grants, that type of thing. So that's what we're looking for. But our next step is design and the rendering, and then get a cost out. You can't go much for grants until you have a lot of these things in place. We need to have the agreement with the town in place, the MOU, as to what our responsibilities are. We need to have a solid estimate of cost and several other things we need before we can go out to grants. I know some of you have been involved with grants and know that there's a number of steps to go through before they even look at it.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Ready for questions?
Please.
Dan, just a quick question on the cost thing or the estimate. I know you just said it could be up to 25,000 to 30,000.
Yeah.
I noticed on here, there's nothing to do with tree removal, and I know the current location that's picked out, I think that's all trees.
The current location we have, it's, no, there's really not a lot of trees there. Actually, the number of trees down there is probably something that we would want to keep. What you have down there mostly is brush.
Okay.
Lot of brush down there to be cleared out, but the trees we hope to stay to give shade and to give a place to dogs as to, you know, to do their thing, whatever. So yeah, hopefully, maybe there's a dead tree there that has to come down, but I don't see a lot of trees.
So that's what I'm hoping.
But brush there is, lots of brush.
Okay. So cost estimation, is it going to include an ongoing annual cost for what the town is responsible for?
Well, see, that's part of when we get to our memorandum of understanding. What is it the responsibilities are of the town and the dog park? Our thinking is, as we go forward, we're going to have fundraisers going on throughout the year. This isn't just a one-time get it up and get it and walk away. We want to do some things. We want to do some fundraising things. We would like to do maybe a dog wash or something to raise some funds to hopefully to be able to keep the park up and amenities as we go along. So we're not looking to step back and say, "Okay, town, now you take over. We've done what we think they need to do." So right now, our vision is something, I don't know if it would be self-sufficient, but to hopefully be self-sufficient. On an annual basis, I don't think it's going to be a lot of money. I don't. You know, you've got some lawn mowing to do that the town would do, and some poop bags or whatever, some of that stuff, maybe plant some flowers there, so, you know, I don't think it's thousands of dollars, but that's what we're thinking right now.
Okay. Madam Chair?
Yes. I have two questions, Dan.
Sure.
Just to make sure that I'm correct in assuming that you would see the Dog Park Committee continuing as a committee?
I would see the Dog Park Committee, yes, to your question.
I'm seeing it.
The Dog Park Committee continuing, but I also look to see that what we want to have is, is we want to have a plan of continuance going forward. So we want to be able to bring new people in, and we want to be able to transition people in and out of the dog park. So a type of a situation where we can expect the dog park to continue. Having the same people on the committee for the next five years, I don't think is going to work. I think what you need is a transition of new blood coming in and doing things to take over and to be responsible for, so.
And what would the relationship be with the parks and rec?
Well, that's something we would sit with.
Something we would have to determine?
That would be determined. That's something we would sit with the town, with Mr. Lee, to determine what our relationship. Who do we report to when we have something? Who do we give a report to on a periodic basis? What is that periodic basis? Is that a monthly basis? We give a report on whatever? We don't know what that is or who that is yet, but that's something that we need to hammer out.
The second question was, there's a reference to a buffer that can be done on one side or all sides of a dog park. What would that look like? Can you explain it a little more?
Well, again, I don't know what it would look like. What I would do is I would defer to the professionals who could come in and say, "How do we protect our neighbors? How do we give them the privacy that they want? How do we restrict the noise level that might be coming out of it? What do we need to do?" I don't know what that is, but I would look to somebody and say, "You know what? We put up this type of fencing, or these types of bushes, or this type of thing." But the idea here is to take an issue and to address that issue to see if we can resolve that issue. Again, we want to be good neighbors. We want to be able to be a positive influence. Is that?
Yes, thank you.
The other sides, Rosemary, the east-west and south side, are all buffered either by trees and bushes or the highway. So I don't know that there's too many neighbors to the east-west or south side that we would have to have too much issues with or try to resolve issues.
Madam Chair?
Sure.
Another question?
Sure.
Just going through the dog park rules.
Yeah.
I'll just ask this question. I know it says dogs must wear valid rabies tags, all dogs must have the data on, you know, immunization and all that. Who would monitor? Who would monitor these rules?
Okay.
I mean, I know it's probably a question you can't answer, or maybe you can, but...
Here's what we think. This is, they need to be registered.
Yep.
They need to have that stuff here, and that's something that we would work out as part of our MOU method of understanding with the town. Does that mean that the animal control officer comes in periodically and looks? Or is that something that we as Dog Park Committee members go in and check? Whatever those rules are, but it's a good question. We need to address those rules. We can't ignore the rule because it's something that needs to be looked at.
Okay.
Back to your question, Rosemary. Talking about succession planning of this, that we need to have a succession plan on the Dog Park Committee, that we bring in new people, and then they learn the park, they learn the rules, they learn what needs to be done, and then they carry on, just like any organization would want to do, so that it becomes a viable, livable organization that does their job.
I had a question, Dan, and this is something you're probably going to just have to surmise, but approximately how many visitors go to these parks? You've been to them on random days of the week and times of the day and those sorts of things. So let's say, is it busier on a weekend? Is it busier in the evening? And how many visitors do you think we might be having there at any given time? High point and low?
Yeah, okay, good question. I've been to the Southington Dog Park on... They need to have that stuff here. And that's something that we would work out as part of our MOU method of understanding with the town. Does that mean that the animal control officer comes in periodically and looks? Or is that something that we, as dog park committee members, go in and check? Whatever those rules are. But it's a good question. We need to address those rules. We can't ignore the rule because it's something that needs to be looked at. Back to your question, Rosemary. Talking about succession planning of this, that we need to have a succession plan on the dog park committee, that we bring in new people and then they learn the park, they learn the rules, they learn what needs to be done, and then they carry on, just like any organization would want to do, so that it becomes a viable, livable organization that does their job.
I had a question, Dan. And this is something you're probably going to just have to surmise. But approximately how many visitors go to these parks? You've been to them on random days of the week and times of the day and those sorts of things. So let's say, is it busier on a weekend? Is it busier in the evening? And how many visitors do you think we might be having there at any given time? High point and low?
Yeah, okay, good question. I've been to the Suddington Dog Park a number of times. And I would think, from my experience, the most I've seen there is somewhere between twelve and fifteen dogs at once. And that's probably a Sunday afternoon or a Saturday afternoon, maybe. Also, you probably will see a little bit more people down there after dinner, twilight, where people come out with their dogs. Usually during the day, a hot summer day, you may go down to the dog park and not see anything. I've seen that, too. To answer your question, I will say this. I don't know. It's like you open up the doors of your business and you hope that people come in and sustain your business. And hopefully, we open the doors and we sustain the dog park. So I don't know if any of the other dog park committee members want to add to. I know Scott goes out to Rocky Hill a lot. We go out to different dog parks and see.
There's one in Sims Berry, is there?
Oh, there's a lot of them all over the place. You know, Woolcott has a beautiful dog park. They just opened it up about two years ago. Scott?
Rocky Hill Park, I've been there on the weekends and probably seen, again, twelve to fifteen dogs. I've been there during the week in the afternoon and found none.
Okay.
There's a little more smaller dogs in the summer because of a lot of condos being in the area. So people cannot let their dogs out. So they bring them to the dog park and they sit around and socialize. And then the dogs play. But I think they even bus them in. The old folks hall, you know, the old buses, you know, to take people wherever. I've seen a bus there loading people up.
Wow.
Well, again, I've been there when there's no dogs.
Yep.
And in the summer, it's probably too hot for a lot of dogs and people.
Sure.
But there is a lot of socializing amongst the people that are bringing them. The people will come in, they start talking about their kids and their dogs and other things. So dogs is an easy way to break the ice with people. Oh, what kind of dog do you have? Or what's the dog's name? And all of a sudden, you get into a conversation and people meet there same time and they talk about other things. So there's that socialization goes. And there's people that on a nice day will go sit there for a couple of, three hours with their dog running around and just socialize with people that come and go.
Okay. And also, in your experience with having gone to other dog parks, are the dog owners really very diligent about cleaning up after their dogs? That's a question that's come to me, you know, talking to people that aren't dog owners and/or go into dog parks. And that's a question that we want to understand, that do people clean up or do they not?
What I find and other members of the committee can find, too, can refer to it. Your dog goes, the person standing there, they say, hey, that's your dog. They just went, you know, you got to go. And there's people that are regulars that'll go there. And they see something, they'll go over and they'll say, hey, your dog just went. Take care of it. That's a big deal among dog owners, you know. There are some that try to get away with it. And there's some that don't pay attention. That's there, that's no matter what.
Right.
But you have, the person standing there watching your dog go, they'll say something. Hey, Freddy just went over there. You need to go take care of it.
Well, I know that is a problem at Norton Park, that people don't take care of their animals. And the results of that are left for other people to witness, so. And that's supposed to happen at our Norton Park, and it doesn't. I've seen it myself, so.
There's little socialization, though, when people walk around a track. Maybe walking with somebody. But at a dog park, what you're doing, you're standing there and your dog's running around and you're talking to people. And we may be talking, and I see your dog over there. I say, hey, your dog needs some attention over there. Oh, okay. So when people are told about it, they react to it. And the other thing, too, is, once we start out with the dog park, we've got to be diligent to be down there and make sure the rules are followed. One of the big rules that need to be followed, in my estimation, is leash. You need to take your dog out of your car on a leash and you don't let the dog go until he's in the bullpen. You've got people who will train their dogs just to get out of the car and go there. But we have a leash law. So once you get the people that are coming regularly, following the rules and you adhere to it, you know, you don't have so much of an issue. You do have some. That doesn't go well, but.
Sure, we're dealing with animals.
And speaking of the rules, again, these are just a list of the rules that we would run by, the town, the town attorney, and saying, here's what we think. Here's what others have, you know. Bless these or add or delete or modify any of these rules as you see fit. But it's, again, for discussion purposes.
Sure.
Madam Chair?
Sure.
I have a follow-up question on that very point.
Sure.
So under the development plan?
Yep.
Is that just a starting point? Or did you pick these items up from looking at other dog parks?
What, the rules?
No, the development plan. For example, it says, you know, the dog park will be double gated with two sections, one for larger dogs and the other for smaller or timid dogs. And I guess the reason I'm asking about that is, you know, a lot of smaller dogs, and I have three little dogs, they're skittish.
Yeah.
And so if you have a larger dog that's timid, those smaller skittish dogs are a lot more likely to attack a larger dog. So I don't know if that's like a starting point or if that's something that you guys thought out and said, it's okay for, you know, larger timid dogs to run with the smaller dogs.
That typically holds true for all the dog parks that are spread. The bigger, the timid dogs or the smaller dogs play. But typically, what you see is you see the smaller dogs and the timid dogs go to the bigger park. And they're usually off on the side. They're not in the main group of the dogs. My dog is pretty timid and she goes off on the side and seldom gets involved into the other dogs running around. Once in a while, she'll find a friend there that is like her and she'll run around. But you see a group of dogs, maybe four or five, that run around and jump. And then you'll see on the outskirts another couple of dogs that don't get into it. They go smell everything and just walk around and hang around with their owner, do their thing, and then they go home.
In my experience, though, in visiting some of the area dog parks, they're very specific about what dogs are allowed in. And even some of the signs you had in your video, eighteen inches tall or below go in the small dog park. Anything above eighteen inches goes in the large dog park. Or anything twenty pounds and under is small, above that is large. So I don't know if you were planning on refining this at all so that it's less subjective, I guess.
Yeah, I see your point. It's so hard to look at it and say, what is that number? I think what it is, is getting a feel for the aggression of the dogs in the small one or anything. And when you get aggressive dogs, people will go up to say, hey, you got to get your dog out of here. I know I've said it a couple of times to people. Hey, you got to get the dog out of here. It's too aggressive. Or people with the little dogs will say, hey, you can't have your dog in here. It's kind of a rule of thumb, but it's like, you know, it's hard to say, well, he's nineteen inches and the dog can't be in here, so. But it's, you know.
I know, but you don't want somebody who's got an aggressive dog and they put him in the little dog park because they can't be in the big dog park.
That's right.
But I know that in a lot of dog parks, the people do police each other.
Well, let me tell you, you put a big aggressive dog in a little dog park, those people are sitting in the dog park, they'll race to the occasion real quick. They won't put up with it.
Okay.
They do. I've seen them do that.
Any other questions for the committee or for Danny or any other thinking on this?
I was just asking if any of the other committee members would like to add to anything?
Yeah, if anybody would like to offer from the committee, that would be good to hear.
Well, I was, being handicapped, I cannot walk my dogs. Being on disability, I can't afford to pay someone to walk my dogs. So having a dog park is like one of the only ways for my dogs to get any kind of an exercise without me actually having to, like, walk after them or chase after them or whatever. But you let them in a dog park and they make friends fast. They run around for an hour or so. They come home, nap time. And frankly, they're much better behaved after the dog park and a whole lot quieter, so.
You should see Scott's dog. It's a big German Shepherd. When you go over to that dog, the dog will lick you to death. I mean, the dog is such a friendly dog. It just doesn't fit the German Shepherd characteristics. Anybody else on dog park committee?
I just think that you have to.
Dan, go ahead.
Hi, Stan. Stan, what's up? Over the past years, we've had different sized dogs, different habitable dogs. And one of the things I learned over those years is that lack of socialization, like having to go to a dog park or, you know, training with our dogs, they were more aggressive. You know, and if they liked our dogs, they became much more sociable and playful. You know, and the other things, we took a little sight in the park, my wife and I, last week, there was like three dogs there. But we spent time chatting with the owners. You know, and, you know, then the dogs were doing their thing. They went to pick them up. They were wasted and all that. But we got more out of it than the dogs did. We feel like that. Also, me being retired, I can, you know, with the committee, I can be at that dog park quite frequently. So no problem there.
Great.
Dan wanted to mention something.
I just think you'd be really surprised, if you spent time at a dog park, how crazy we really are. Like, we will police you like you've never seen. Hey, get over there. No, you don't have, get a bag. They're over there, right there. See them? Go. That dog's aggressive. You're out. People that love their dogs and want these kind of things, they really are going to be protective. And we want it as clean as it can be. And we don't want any fights. So we're going to be watching people so they know, if you're going to come here, you're going to follow our rules or you're going to be out. And I have no problem telling someone that. And I think everybody would feel that way, you know. Like, you got to clean up because I'm not cleaning up for your dogs. I may not be here. So I think if, you know, you really see, like, we are assertive and we will police it. And you'll see that in a lot of dog parks.
Sure.
Kathy, you had a question?
Well, if everybody's finished with theirs, go ahead. I'll ask mine at the end.
You know, I just have to ask, Dan. Presentation does refer, under the town responsibility, to schedule dumpster and porta potty cleaning. Is it typical to have porta potty at dog parks?
Some do. What I'm talking about dumpster cleaning is really the trash cans that be picked up, that type of thing. Some of them have a porta potty out there. Some of them don't. It depends on their accessibility. If they're in a park and you've got to go over the bridge, like Woolcott, there's bathroom over the bridge, so you can go there. So it's a matter of, what do we want to do? Do we want to have something out there and what the public wants? If we have something out there as a porta potty, then we need to make sure it's taken care of.
So it's not a given?
It's what?
It's not a given.
No, it's not a given. An example of.
Did you have another question?
Yeah, Madam Chair, just real quick. I want to ask this question, and this all happened before I was on the council.
Sure.
I just want to start off by saying, I'm not against a dog park.
Okay, thank you.
I have a dog myself, so, you know, I think a dog park is, you know, it could be good for blind, though. But I just want to know about, we had six different locations that were originally picked. And one of the locations was Norton Park.
Yes.
I know the chief is here and, you know, Robert can answer some of these questions as well, too. But why was, because I'm, at this point, I'm against having a dog park in a residential area.
Okay.
That's just me right now. But I'm not against a dog park.
Okay.
And I just want to know the reasons around Norton Park being de-selected, for lack of words.
Can amp tools on you, Chief, to respond to that, please?
As the target of not wanting it in the park, I'm happy to.
Well, that's, because that all happened before I was here and I can't really get a quicker understanding.
It's a valid question. I'm happy to answer it. I take the approach, as the public safety official for the police department and representing the town, that I put people first. And I think you've got a lot going on in the Norton Park. I think introducing a dog park, and that brings even more uncertainty as far as public safety is concerned. I, you know, I've had plenty of experience with dog parks where I came from and what I've been involved with in my civilian life, being a dog owner. And I just didn't think that that was the proper place for a dog park if we were interested in dogs recreating. If we were interested in people socializing, I get why the park is attractive. But if we focus on the objective that this is somewhere for the dogs to recreate, then I thought there were probably alternative locations, such as the proposed one that was focused on here, that was probably better for the dogs. So again, I kind of took a look at it for people first and then what's our objective for a dog park? And that's for the dogs to recreate. Where would the dogs rather be? In a frenzied atmosphere, where soccer, in skateboarding and everything's going on, and the clattering of cars and everything else happening? Or where people could go and be at peace with their animals and recreate? So that's where I was coming from with it. And I think that's where the town manager and I were focusing on when we were talking with Dan early on. I really only met with Dan once. They didn't really like me, so they kicked me out. But.
Really? We did? I don't remember that.
No, no, I'm just kidding.
He wears a gun, so I'd be careful.
They're probably all armed. But that's where we were coming from on that. So I appreciate your question. Thank you.
And also, another park was Pateroski. I know that's a lot smaller park than Norton.
I think it's similar.
I was going to say, is it similar? But I know Pateroski's a lot smaller. I just want to know, what area were you looking at at Pateroski?
It was, it's where the sprinkler is. It's to the west part of there.
So it's past the splash pad and all?
So you would go on, park on Grant Avenue and come into Grant Avenue and you would have a dog park there. And of course, everybody on Grant Avenue would not be happy with dog park cars parked there. So that added to the issue of, eh, Pateroski probably wouldn't work. Along with what the chief said, with all the other activities of Little League and basketball and all that stuff. So we fought originally for Norton Park. We did. We fought pretty hard with that. But we came to a reasonable alternative, which we think is even a better alternative right now. So I think if I was to look back at it personally, and I think a lot of the members of the dog committee, if we went back and looked at it, knowing what we know now about Norton Place Extension, that would probably be on top of our list.
Thank you. I do have one last question.
Go ahead.
It's not for Dan. It's more for the town manager. If we developed the park in Plainville, wherever it is, do we have the manpower to take care of it, cutting the grass and maintaining it? Or is this something that may result in overtime or so? You can't really answer that at this point. Because it'll be another park, another section of town that will need to be maintained on a regular basis?
I don't think we would have to add personnel. I think we would have to add it to our list of things to get done and, you know, I don't think it would be a significant addition to our grass cutting operation.
Thank you.
And a lot depends on, you know, how much of it is grass down there, you know, how it gets developed. I would anticipate that the animal control officer would probably go down there at least once a day. At least once a day as part of their routine to check out the park. I think it would probably become a regular patrol area for the police department to keep an eye on as well. You'd probably see more police in that area and animal control people as a result of having the park there. I don't think it would add, that portion of it, I don't see adding significantly to the, you know. I'd really have to think about a port-a-lat. Because they're subject to being tipped over or that kind of thing. I'm not in a remote area like that. I wouldn't want to. I would have to think hard about that one.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Well, that was my last question. I wanted you to talk about the locations because you had listed several of them and asking exactly what Robert did. Well, how did we finalize the fact that, you know, this was the ultimate location in terms of what would work for the town? I do remember our conversation about Norton Park.
I remember it. I've got it recorded. I got you out here. No, I don't, I don't.
That happens to me a lot, Dan. I just want you to know. However, my concern was, you know, and I agreed with, uh, the chief in regard to traffic, that would be a place where people, probably many people from out of town would come to because it would be such an attractive location. I also had a concern about taking away a whole acre of open space at Norton Park, devoting it to a dog park. I think some of our parks need to remain with open green space and not always have activities on every, you know, square foot that we own down there. And that was one of my other, um, issues with that. And in, and in Pateroski as well, I, I believe in keeping things open. There's a lot of stuff that goes on at both of those parks, and, um, that was one of my, one of my concerns, among the others that we discussed regarding public safety and monitoring it and things of that nature. So, that was my question, is how did we come to that location?
How did we?
Well, that was it.
Yeah, was it?
But I think we've already answered it, so...
Yeah, we did it, yeah. I, I wanna respond more to, if I may, go back to your question and leave you with a thought here. Uh, one of the concerns we had after we talked for a while about Norton or Pateroski is people coming down to the park, dropping their dogs off, and then taking their kids over to the swings or hitting ground balls. You're not gonna have that down at Norton's, Norton Place Extension. The people are going to be in a park. There's nothing else for them to do to take their kids to a swing set or anything. And, uh, so that, that, you know, played a big part in our thinking that people would just leave it as a, as a babysitter for an hour or so while the kids went and, and played or went swimming. So, that was another item in there.
Thanks, Dan.
Okay.
Any other questions? For the committee members or for Dan?
One more comment, if I may.
Sure.
I went over and I introduced myself to the three ladies over here who are in opposition to the dog park. And I offered to them, and we talked about, any questions that come up from you or from us, what we'd like to do is is be able to go directly to one another and share any questions and thoughts that we have, rather than seeing what happens out on the internet or anything in the hearsay. Get it directly from one of us, you ladies, you folks, so that we can share that information and, and, and have the same thought process going. So, I wanna keep, I wanna keep the, uh, the outside stuff away, so...
Good luck with that.
Yeah.
But I, I, I understand the sincerity of what you're trying to do here, but, you know?
Yeah, all right.
That's, that's certainly what we should be doing, is dialoguing with everybody that's involved, that has a direct relationship with what we're doing, and if it's in their neighborhood or in their backyard or in, in wherever they live and they have questions and concerns, that's what we need to do, is talk to them.
Yep, agreed.
So, good. Okay.
And we're available, so if you have any more questions, uh, you know where to find us.
Thanks.
Thanks for your time. I appreciate it very much and, uh, have a good evening.
I wanna thank you and your committee for all the work you've done to put this together. I knew it take, it takes time to do this. It takes personal time of visiting. Making the video was helpful. I actually visited the Southington Dog Park last week just to get a sense, and that's just an unused Little League field. So, that was kind of an interesting setup. But, um, I do appreciate all the energy and effort you put, to put all this together for us, so we can have a clear picture of what you think a dog park should be and what you've learned from other towns as to how they manage a dog park and, and put them together. So, I thank you for all of you that came tonight, and I appreciate you taking the time to do that.
Thank you. Thank you for the time.
Our pleasure.
Have a good evening.
Thank you again. Good evening, everybody. We're going to be in the next portion of our meeting. Before we stand for the pledge, I would like to ask everybody to, um, take a moment of silence in recognition of the 16th anniversary, anniversary of nine eleven, tragedy that befell our country and, um, many people lost their lives and the suffering goes on. So, if you would just take a few moments in memory of those, I would be appreciative. We'll start our meeting with the pledge, and Councilman Carrier, would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do not have any presentations tonight or public hearings, so we'll begin, begin with minutes of our previous meeting. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. Are there any additions or corrections? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Do we have any announcements or reports tonight?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, I just wanna point out, uh, you know, the balloon festival, I think, was a huge success this year, um, partially due to the weather, but I also wanna thank the Plainville Fire Company for, uh, the tremendous number of changes that they've made over the last couple of years to improve traffic, bring in the school buses, to, you know, avoid parking around the park. Um, and I also wanna thank the town manager and town staff, because I think without them, that would not have been possible. So, hopefully, everybody enjoyed it.
Heard all good things, and I was there, and everybody seemed to have a wonderful time. Great. Does anybody else have anything to report? Okay, I have one item. I was asked to read a letter into the records, so I think this is as good a spot as any to do it. Letters to the Town Council of Plainville, from Regine Angel Carrier, 28 Perrin Road, Plainville, regarding the walking bike trail on a portion of Perrin Road. We are writing to let you know that we are not in favor of the bike and walking trail location potentially being discussed for the portion of Perrin Road north of Johnson Avenue in Plainville. Having lived on Perrin Road for many years, it is our experience that at the corner of Perrin Road and Johnson Avenue, there is a bus stop that stops many times for the various schools in town for the children of the associated streets in the area. And we feel that adding a foot or bike trail in this area will only add to the vehicle traffic in the area and may be very unsafe for all involved. Perrin Road is not a wide street in this area to add the trail, and the topography is also not ideal for this type of trail, as this portion of the street has a potential, quote-unquote, line-of-sight issue for the trail as well. While we certainly understand the need for this trail to be finalized, this was not the solution that we think would be practical for the town of Plainville to consider. Thank you for your consideration in this matter, Regine Angel Carrier. So, that was some communication I received regarding the trail. I have no other report, so if there are no other comments from the council, we'll move on to appointments and resignations.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to ratify the appointment of Chad Chamberlain as a regular firefighter to the Plainville Fire Department as of April 4th, 2014.
Second. I have a motion in the second. Can we just have a little information as to why he, it was as of 2014? I know you got the back, backup to that.
Yeah. The, um, town staff was made aware recently that, uh, the fire company had, uh, lost sight of this, uh, appointment to regular membership in the fire company, and it would just slip by everybody and it was just recently noticed, and, uh, so we need to catch up for Chad.
Okay. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do we have any other appointments and resignations tonight?
I do not.
Nope. Okay, moving on. The Board of Education typically would come to a meeting to give us a report, however, they are also meeting tonight, so we'll catch up with them at our next, um, at our next council meeting.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I was asked to read something, if it's okay.
Okay.
Um, find it. Did have it here. Hang on, I got it right here. Couple of things on here. The first is, uh, the track at Plainville High School is finally ready for action, though there are a few minor items still on the punch list. It looked great for Friday's football game. The Blue Devils varsity football team did lose eighteen to thirteen, but they played an excellent game and held their own against top-ranked Bloom, the top-ranked Bloomfield team. It's important to note that now that the stadium looks great, the backers are going to be soliciting advertisers for the field, which we knew was coming, and a portion of the proceeds of that advertising will go to the turf fund. The next item is related to pre-K. Says, "Pre-K enrollment has grown substantially as a result of expanding to a full-day, full-week. Currently, they are at capacity at all three schools with 144 pre-K students. They ended last school year with 104." They, says they actually have more pre-K students district-wide than they do in kindergarten. And at Toffalon, they had to move a kindergarten teacher to pre-K due to the high enrollment. Parents commented, commented to administration and the media that they're thrilled with access to full-day, full-week, pre-K in our schools. And enrollment in the district is up by about forty students overall this year from last year. That's all she gave me to report.
Okay. Thank you. We do not have a report from the town attorney, so we will move on to report of the town manager. Mr. Lee?
Uh, thank you. Before I get into, uh, the items that I have listed on the agenda, I wanted to give an update on the state budget. I know that I handed out some information to the town council, and I gave you some additional information, supplemental, uh, information, uh, this evening as well, I guess. It was only a month ago, the governor had proposed that if a state did not have a budget in place, that, you know, that he would be severely reducing the amount of money that would go to, uh, many cities and towns in the state of Connecticut. At that point in time, he was talking about a, uh, reduction to Plainville that would probably be in the eight to nine million dollar range. None of us felt that that was a real serious, uh, concern, uh, assuming that the, you know, the state legislature would eventually come up with a budget, but it was certainly something that got a lot of attention and a lot of airplay around the state of Connecticut. Where one month later, we still don't have a state budget, but the governor released what he called a compromise budget, uh, last week. A compromise budget had a lot of detail in it, uh, and it, uh, it certainly takes the, uh, the amount of money that, uh, was proposing to give to the cities and towns, especially as it relates to ECS, uh, you know, put it back into the realm of, of may even what be considered reality. So, uh, and, uh, in, in, in looking at that proposed budget, what that would mean, mean to Plainville, uh, is a total state aid reduction, if it was approved by, if, if it was adopted by the state legislature, and, and as I understand it, the House is supposed to meet on Thursday, there is some speculation that they won't be able to, you know, at this point, you know, there's still a long ways before they get to approving something, but the compromise budget would reduce, uh, Plainville's, uh, state aid, uh, for the current fiscal year, uh, by, uh, a total of eight hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars from what we had considered, uh, you know, as part, what we were expecting for revenue back in February. Of that eight hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars, four hundred and thirty-four thousand of it is proposed, would be actually a, a payment to the state of Connecticut for the teacher's retirement. Over half of that would be, what he would be proposing would be Plainville's share of the teacher's retirement. So, we've gone from, you know, eight to nine million dollar reduction to eight hundred and fifty-two thousand. That still is a lot of money. I'm not trying to minimize it, but I, certainly in comparison to a month ago, it's, it certainly is significantly better. What's, what, what is, um, you know, it's a two-year budget that he's proposing, by the way, and, and, you know, there's also numbers for the second year. And in the second year, fiscal year nineteen, it would be proposed that Plainville would, would actually increase its revenue by about fifty thousand dollars. What that tells me is that, uh, whatever we do in the current fiscal year, uh, will not have to be, you know, if, if was adopted, you know, somewhere near, close to this, that we wouldn't have to double down next year with having a decrease this year and another decrease of significance the next year, which usually lends itself, in my opinion, to using a one-time revenue and trying to make up the, uh, the expenditure, you know, next year as opposed to, uh, you know, increasing the mill rate for the second half of the year and things along those lines. It's one of the reasons why we have a rainy day fund. It's one of the reasons why it's relatively healthy and that, uh, you know, this could get us over the hump and then have to deal with the, you know, the issue, uh, you know, in the following year. Um, so at least, I just, you know, I, I, I believe that this is probably a worst-case scenario. Um, you know, the legislature's gonna take this, and, and I don't think they're gonna make it any worse, although if they, if they wait long enough, it could get worse, because there is some revenue increases. Uh, he's proposed, he's, he's proposing that he would accept a slight increase to the sales tax to six and a half percent. I think the Democrat, the Democratic House is talking about six point eight-five percent. And, uh, and the longer you wait to do that, of course, the longer, the less money you're gonna get in return, so, uh, so... But anyhow, I, I did give you a, a, a box at the bottom, which gives you our unassigned fund balance of, of a little bit over ten million dollars. It represents about seventeen percent of the current year's budget. I did point out that, that if we reduce the, uh, the unassigned fund balance by the governor's compromise budget impact of eight hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars, if you further reduced it by option four, the middle school boiler, and we'll be discussing that a little bit later in my conversation, uh, my report, that that would still leave an unassigned fund balance of about eight and a half million dollars, eight point six million dollars, which is four point fourteen, point six-six percent. I think we should have a goal of, of, of somewhere in the twelve percent range, and we've had these conversations in the past with the council about what's a good goal to have for an unassigned fund balance. But I think our unassigned fund balance is a, is a little bit, uh, I wouldn't say it's a little bit high, but I think it, you know, certainly there's some, some flexibility that you can, that you can have with that, and that flexibility could be used to make up the, you know, what, what looks like gonna be a shortfall, a potential shortfall as, as far as the state budget is concerned, and also consider doing some, uh, some work at, at the, on the middle school boiler that could save us some dollars in the long run as well, but we'll talk about that later on in my report. I wanted to, uh, update you on that. If you, if you go through it, sometimes what you'll see is, is what the state says they, they, they gave us for, uh, for the current fiscal year, that may not match up with the budget that we had for this, for, for this current fiscal year or last year, excuse me. That they'll say, well, you gave us for fiscal year seventeen. Our numbers might be slightly different, because when we did our number, our revenue estimates was before the state budget was completed, so when they, you know, we were pretty close, but you'll see some slight differences in the numbers. So, between, you're looking at seventeen starting points. So, that's why I used our budget for seventeen. That was on the second page, uh, what we had for our budget and, and whatnot, so... This year, it's, uh, it's gonna be, I think it's gonna be a little bit different when all is set up, but I'm not sure what they're gonna do with the teacher's retirement. That's more than half of the reduction that we're talking about now in the, in the governor's compromise budget. Be, it'll be interesting to see what the state, you know, legislature does with respect to that. All right?
Thank you.
As far as my report is concerned, thank you, everyone. We have the loader backhoe bid, the capital improvement plan for fiscal year eighteen, which is current fiscal year. Here marked one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to replace the loader backhoe in the roadways department. The town advertised for bid and one proposal was received. The bid was submitted by Northland JCB, in the amount of one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. There is an item under new business to consider awarding the bid to purchase the new backhoe loader from Northland JCB at Wallingford in the amount of one hundred and fifteen thousand Next item I have is opioid litigation. Uh, last week, the city of Waterbury commenced litigation against six pharmaceutical companies and four physicians who were key opinion leaders for opioids. The lawsuit alleges that these companies and individuals harmed Waterbury through their aggressive marketing campaign that sought to and did change longstanding medical prescribing practices that dictated that opioids should only be used for short-term or for terminal illnesses because of their highly addictive nature. The city's complaint alleges that the defendants orchestrated a campaign that falsely presented opioids as safe and effective for long-term use for chronic pain, even though the defendants knew that the promotion of opioids for these purposes was not warranted and would lead directly to increased costs for patients, healthcare insurers, and payers such as the city of Waterbury. The defendants have profited significantly as a result of their self-serving marketing with opioid prescription rates and increasing fourfold since 1999. At the same time, however, opioid-related deaths, opioid addiction rates, and the costs associated with improper use of opioids and opioid addiction have skyrocketed. All cities and towns in Connecticut, including Plainville, have been impacted to a degree like the city of Waterbury. There are two law firms that are leading the litigation efforts to hold the defendants accountable for their role in the opioid epidemic. These law firms are performing their entire services on a full contingency basis, full contingency fee basis, meaning that they will only get paid if the pharmaceutical companies are found at fault. It is suggested that the town council consider joining in this lawsuit as well. This is not a decision that needs to be made this evening unless you want to. And I did provide you with some statistics from the police department with regards to opioid overdoses that have occurred in Plainville over the last, since 2012. And, you know, Chief MacIntyre is here. He's provided me with this information and certainly can raise any questions with respect to it. And with your permission, I'd like to just ask the chief to come forward and maybe tell you a little bit about these statistics and then answer any questions you might have about it.
Thank you.
Chief?
Okay, so as you can see, we went back to 2012 where we registered one overdose. In 2013, three overdoses. 2014, five. 2015, three. Then in 2016, it spikes up to 19. And around that time, we got involved as a department in a town with administering the Narcan reversal medication for those who were in the throes of an overdose. So that came on somewhere about mid-year, but you'll note that during 2016, we used the Narcan seven times and all those individuals survived the overdose. You jump up to 2017, which obviously we haven't concluded a full year of documentation, and we're at 24. So we've gone from 19 to 24, and we're not, we're not anywhere near, you know, the end of the year, so to speak, with our, with our numbers. Now during that time, we administered Narcan 19 times and 18 individuals survived. Some of the complex issues that you're not going to see in these kind of sterile numbers are what's really going on here? Is it oxycodone, oxycodone? Is it heroin? Is it people who transferred from the pharmaceutical to the street drug because of cost and availability, et cetera? So this is just such an enormous problem for everyone across the nation, that what you're seeing here is a little snapshot that's happening across the U.S. Don't have, really have all the answers as far as what's going to have, really very few answers, but what we know are some of the sort of odd anomalies that are happening. We're administering Narcan to the same person two or three times on different occasions. So we're not getting better. A lot of times, somebody will ask me about the police involvement with the opioid epidemic, and my initial response, quite frankly to you, is it's a healthcare issue and which started with, and I have a little bit of involvement in this on the healthcare side through, through family and relatives. It started with a palliative care issue where the doctor's orders were to manage pain. And so from there, we've just kind of spiraled into this. So the pharmaceutical companies, and I'd just like to, I'd just like to say that from a law enforcer's point of view, I look at these pharmaceutical companies as having duped the public and fraudulently sold their products. So I'm from that passionate side, the philosophical side of this argument, that they pulled one over on the public a bit here, and so I'm not really, you know, a fan of what they did here. So I would be someone who would be looking at it through the lens of, I'd like to see them get theirs. And from there, you have the doctors who are prescribing because the patients want their pain managed, and the pharmaceutical company wants to sell their, their pain medication. So we were off to the races with, especially with oxycodone, not much unlike steroids after World War II. They just got prescribed for all the wrong reasons and just sort of took off. Just, this is much more deadly. So basically, the numbers are very one-dimensional. There's not a lot of meat to what that presentation gives you, but at least it gives you a rough understanding that we're busy and this is, this is impacting our community and is a part of this community, and I'd love to have a solution for it, but we don't. Can I answer any questions, Madam Chair?
Does anybody have any questions for the chief? I think it is difficult, and, you know, there's, there's a number of different levels to this whole situation, whether it's the doctor prescribing, the pharmaceutical company, people misusing it on their own accord, and sometimes, you know, some of these medications, people become addicted by taking it from somebody else, and all of a sudden, there's a problem there, and then they self-medicate with other drugs that are not through a pharmacy. So I think it's, there's a lot of different levels to this, and it's a terrible problem that's all over the country, mostly a lot in the Northeast, though, from what I, there's a lot of Northeast that has a lot of this going on. Some other parts of our country are, I don't know that there is.
I don't know if reporting is the same. You know, again, the numbers are just so one-dimensional. I don't know if reporting is the same. I don't know if there's access to law enforcement and first responders. We're very fortunate in New England that we have the system where the police or fire in some communities are the first responders. So in a town like Plainville, we have around a four-minute response time to a medical emergency. So we're very fortunate to have that. The community I came from, we were roughly seven minutes and under. So four minutes is a phenomenal response time, and counterreactive drugs like Narcan are very effective because of that short period of time it takes us to get there, administer it, and counteract the effects of the opiate. But I think elsewhere in the country, you don't have that. You don't have the immediate response. You have county sheriffs or county government where, you know, a highway or ranger or a trooper is an hour and a half out. So I don't, I don't really know how it plays into the whole world. I, you know, my familiarity is really localized to Connecticut.
Well, the illegal drug trade is going to certainly be directed toward the biggest areas of population, so North Dakota is not going to be as populated as, you know, some of our other bigger cities. A lot of them exist on the East Coast, so it's difficult. When, when your officers administer Narcan, do they ever, or is it, do they know what the person has taken, or they just realize the person's in crisis, they give them that to counteract it, but do they know what they've taken to get to that point?
This, it's a great question. The standard of care has changed somewhat several times since we started administering this in 2016. So the bench line is, there's, there's a certain criteria that we look for. Unconsciousness is the big clue. So they don't know exactly what the person has taken, but there's other evidence and there's other information that you pick up on. There's other clues that you pick up on when you're in the room or you have a witnessing party who calls.
On the scene, yeah.
And the witnessing party says, you know, save them, they've just ingested this, this, and this, or they just, you know, snorted this or shot that up. So there's other indicating factors, but the protocols have changed to the point where we're really looking to administer it anytime we have that first initial clue. We're sort of keyed in on, do we need to administer this now the person is unconscious? And then we look at the totality of the circumstances to go from there. But as you could see with the 18 saves or so thus far this year, the protocol's working.
It is.
Well, and certainly the pharmaceutical companies are going to argue that, all of the things that isn't their fault, people abuse it and all of those types of issues, and that'll be up to a court to decide as to what, you know, what the responsibility of, if there is a responsibility of the pharmaceutical companies. I will say that the national law firm, that, that the city of Waterbury engaged, and I participated in a, when they had a meeting of town officials about that, you know, a week or so ago. They actually, you know, won a substantial lawsuit, you know, several years ago that showed the connection between their false, you know, advertising and their deliberate attempt to mislead the public, and there was a substantial award that they, I think it was a settlement that they received as a result of that. We would only be looking to recoup our costs of dealing with this issue, the cost of our first responders, you know, the time and effort that they've taken, the cost of our, of our prescription increases that we've had, you know, with our own employees, you know, taking, you know, increase, our increased prescription costs, which is self-insured. We've seen, you know, an increase in opioid use, you know, prescription cost, and, you know, and we feel that those are things that we would look to recoup. And so we're only looking to get back what it cost us. That's all we can, that's all we can recoup. And we're going to have to demonstrate that. Certainly, it's not to the degree that the city of Waterbury is, but I think that if, if it is shown that the pharmaceutical companies have done what is alleged in the lawsuit, and I know I've provided you with a copy of that, then they deserve to be held accountable for it.
Robert, do you have a list of the towns that have signed on to this already? Do you have it with you, or can you provide that to us?
I can provide that. There's, there were four or five that said they were going to participate on that particular day. I know that Oxford was one of them. Bristol was another, right next door. I believe Nogatuck was another, but we can, we can get you the updated list with regards to that.
Okay.
We would be bringing individual suits. We wouldn't be all working, you know, we would, it would be one law, one law firm, or two law firms, one in Connecticut and one in the national law firm. They hope that it would be fashioned and litigated in Waterbury. We don't know if that would be the case or not, but it would be individual lawsuits, not a joint lawsuit. But they would represent Plainville and the others. They'd link them all together so they'd be done at the same time, but it wouldn't be, we wouldn't be linked as all plaintiffs of one lawsuit. It'd be separate plaintiffs that would, they would consolidate, they would look to consolidate the, into one, you know, hearing, you know, one process. But I can get you the names of the other.
Yeah, I would like to see who else is involved, who is also signed on to this. There, I mean, I'm sure that the larger cities in Connecticut, such as Hartford and New Haven and New Britain, and some of those other larger cities with bigger populations than Plainville, I wonder if they, are they also joining in this, or is this just, I'm curious about?
Well, this is, I mean, they just filed the lawsuit, you know, a week and a half ago. The mayor of Waterbury, you know, brought this to CCM's attention, Connecticut Conference Municipalities about a month ago. So I think you're going to see a lot more cities and towns joining, as they learn more about it.
Okay.
And I will get you at least who is joining.
Thank you. Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
I will tell you that I spoke to Attorney Mastriani, who has reviewed the lawsuit. I had a conversation with him today, and he indicated that, in his opinion, the town has nothing to lose by engaging with this, with these attorneys, because it's a full contingency basis and, you know, the town could recoup its dollars somewhere down the line. He felt that certainly it's legitimate, you know, it's not a pie in the sky kind of thing.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Quick question on that. I know that, and you gave us voluminous information as background to this, but two aspects of it. Number one is the time and effort that it's going to take town staff to gather up whatever costs we've incurred. Is that worth it on top of just trying to stop the unscrupulous practice? Or?
In talking to, in talking to the attorneys, and listen, because that was one of the questions that was asked at the, at the meeting, the attorneys indicated that they could probably get most of that information from, from Anthem, as far as, you know, the use, you know, the usage and the impact it's had on our health insurance plans. You know, with regards to the number of calls, you know, the chief would say, hey, on average, you know, this is what it costs us to, here's the cost of Narcan, here's the cost of, you know, responding. The average call is, you know, a couple of hours, which is worth X amount of dollars, you know, so it would be generalized to a great degree, but it didn't sound like it was an overwhelming amount of time that we'd have to spend in order to put something together at this point in time.
So it's worthwhile?
I believe it is.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Just another quick mention, in doing a little bit of reading about this, the state legislature took up legislation last year to try and address some of these issues, one of which was, and you may know whether this has been, if it went through or if it didn't get voted on, or if it's back, back in committee somewhere, but one of the pieces of that was there was going to actually be legislation that doctors could only prescribe seven days' worth of that type of drug. Now, there is also a caveat to that, depending on the patient's condition and what their medical situation was, but do you know if that has gone into effect? And if so, that would certainly reduce the number of prescriptions or the amount of drug being prescribed per doctor.
The answer is yes.
It did go through?
It is in place. That doesn't mean it can't renew the prescription. It only means they can only fulfill the prescription for seven days.
Right.
And then they come back and look for another seven days.
Well, again, it's more of a control at the outset of somebody. You know, if you break your ankle, you maybe not need 30 pills. Maybe you only need seven days' worth to get through the initial trauma that was done to your foot, and then you can, you can find other options for treating pain rather than a narcotic. So I think that was the thinking in terms of some of these prescriptions being written.
And part of that actually includes increased reporting by the doctor to the state.
Right.
So they're looking for trends to see the number of prescriptions going down, including refills. They're watching refills very closely.
So there is some work that's already been done on this to decrease the prescription writing.
Madam Chair, just getting back to the data gathering question on a local basis. I think, you know, I went through the long document last night, and I think for Waterbury it was both the prescription and also for the treatment as well, for people that had become addicted and had developed problems, but that, so they've done it, so they've gone through the process of gathering that data, and hopefully that would be helpful to other municipalities who decided to join in terms of how they could go about gathering that information so that it could become part of the suit. I am glad that you did, you know, I had asked her, I know, earlier about Attorney Mastriani's opinion. I'm glad to hear that he has reviewed it and taken a look at it. But I am interested also in seeing what other municipalities will be joining, because certainly the information is compelling, especially about the promotional campaign, and the data, just even in Plainville, is startling, you know, and the speed in which this has happened just in the course of one or two years.
Overwhelming. Lots of resources. It's a terrible thing to happen to anybody. I have had family members that have struggled and have not succeeded with that. So I do, I have great empathy for anybody that's part of that situation.
And if you like, we could even, if, you know, you don't have to make a decision tonight, if you like, we could bring, you know, one of the attorneys in to answer any questions you might have as well, as far as the details are concerned, you know, the attorneys that will represent the town.
Okay.
If you chose to go forward.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else, I'll move on. Next item I have is the water pollution control phosphorus project update. The plans and specifications for the phosphorus upgrade to the water pollution control plant will be submitted to the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. It looks like a week from today, on September 18th. It is proposed that the referendum for the project occur on Tuesday, January 30th. If that date is acceptable to the town council, I would propose the following schedule that will be used leading up to the referendum. The first would be to develop a mailer to be sent to all property owners detailing the need and benefits of the project as well as the cost impact. This mailer would be reviewed by the town council at your October 2nd meeting. The mailers would be sent out to the public on or about November 1st. Public information session would be held on Thursday, November 16th, where residents could learn more about the project and have the opportunity to ask questions. A public hearing on the bond ordinance will be held on December 4th, and the approval of the bond ordinance and the setting of the referendum date would occur on December 18th, the December 18th town council meeting, and that would give sufficient notice for, to have the referendum on January 30th. If the town council concurs with this proposed schedule, we would proceed accordingly.
Does anybody have any questions about the timeline or the schedule here?
I'm good with it.
It looks good. We're good, so.
Next item I have is the EverSource Energy Opportunities Program Proposal. The school facilities department has been working with PTE Energy of Plainville on possible incentive monies to replace the boiler at the middle school and to install LED lighting at the high school, Linden Street School, firehouse, library, municipal center, police station, and senior center. The boiler at the middle school has exceeded its useful life, and while it is still operating, there are currently some leaks that have developed in the boiler that need to be repaired. It is uncertain how long the boiler can last after these repairs have been made. The replacement of the boiler has been included in the BOE capital improvement plan for several years. The total cost of the project is estimated at $1,78,152, and incentives totaling $389,11, or 36.1 percent of the project are available if the boiler is replaced by December 31st. The incentives would not be available in 2018. If these improvements are made, annual energy savings would be $83,578. That would be each year. This would be a payback of 8.2 years and a return on investment of over 12 percent. There are four options regarding this proposal. Certainly, one option would be to do nothing. This would lose the opportunity to receive the incentive of 390K and reduce Plainville's, and the opportunity to reduce Plainville's energy expenditures. In addition, the boiler could break down in future years requiring emergency appropriations. Second option is to take advantage of the EverSource loan program to pay for the improvements. Because their program has a cap on what can be borrowed, the remaining balance would increase operating costs by $88,700 for the next four years. That would be split between the board of education's budget and the town budget, and I give you those numbers. So it would actually, if we just went with their loan program, it would increase our operating costs for next year until we're able to pay it off in four operating costs for next year until we're able to pay it off in four years and then have the savings of $88,000 each year, $83,000 each year after that. You could authorize an additional appropriation of $354,000 from unassigned fund balance, would not impact the operating budget and savings would start after four years. That would take away the need to increase the operating budget going forward. Or authorize the additional appropriation of $580,000 from the unassigned fund balance. This would lower the operating costs for next year by $56,000, $56,000, which would occur over the next four years and then it would increase to $83,000 after that. I would recommend option four because it would replace the boiler at the middle school before this winter, take advantage of the incentive of $390,000 and lower expenses in the fiscal year 19 operating budget by $56,000. As you're aware, the, you know, we know that the, we suspect that the budget's going to increase fairly significantly next year just due to the increase in the state aid for the current fiscal year. There is also sufficient monies in the unassigned fund balance to handle this additional appropriation. The project, the problem isn't going away. You know, the question is, do we do something now and avoid the emergency situation, you know, or roll the dice? You know, I think that, you know, there's certainly some good reasons for moving forward at this point in time. Additional information regarding the proposal was included in your meeting package. Steve Bussel from School Facilities Director is here this evening to ask any questions as well and there is an item under new business should you want to move forward with this proposal. If you wanted to take either option three or option four, it would require, because it's an additional appropriation, it would require a public hearing before you're able to, you know, if you wanted to authorize the dollars, you would first have to have a public hearing. We would propose if you wanted to go forward with that, we would schedule that for, for the next. So it's an opportunity to take one-time dollars, which is the unassigned fund balance, to pay for a one-time expenditure, which is the replacement of the boiler, and to make some improvements to lighting that would, that would reduce our energy costs. So it's, you know, to a certain degree, it's a win-win situation all the way around. However, there are uncertainties, certainly with regards to, you know, where the, where the state budget is going, but the incentives aren't going to be around next year, you know, unfortunately. So that's why I felt it was important to bring it to you, you know, at this meeting this evening. I think we're fortunate to be in a financial position to take advantage of that, if that's what the council desires to do. There are other towns who don't have that flexibility. So, so Steve is here to answer any questions you might have with regards to the middle school boiler or any of those items. He's been the one who's been involved with the, with this development of this project. And I felt it was, we both felt it was worthwhile to bring it to your attention and to give you the option, the opportunity to decide whether you want to take advantage of that or not.
Do we have questions or comments about this?
I do, yes.
Go ahead.
You can go first.
Nope, I said he could go first.
Sorry?
Yeah, I got a few questions. I guess I would ask about the timeline, you know, as far as, I know you said by December 31st, if we'd had a public hearing, our next meeting, you know, how crucial is it as far as a decision, you know, how much time do we have to make the decision as far as the boilers are concerned?
Time is of the essence right now. This could be a 10-day lead time on getting the boilers in, probably a couple of weeks to get them installed. We're already looking at heating season starting middle to the end of October. So I'm, I've been pushing EverSource to finish up their letters of agreements so we can get them before the council to review. While that's taking place, we have time to have a public hearing, in my opinion, right now, but we do need to move it along as quickly as possible.
And you're saying, so I guess a follow-up with that is that you're trying to avoid being in the heating season because it's not possible or?
Well, there are ways around it. We can, we can bring in some temporary boilers or pipe hot water into the building while the work is going on. The price that we have from McKenna Mechanical includes quite a bit of, I won't say fluff, but they have money put aside in case they ran into issues like that. What they're trying to do is get it done without utilizing those money and coming under budget. And I would like to try to do that.
Contingency in the case that, you know, that is needed during the, you know, if you get into the heat.
Well, it depends on, yeah, it was, it was all, it was all dependent upon how they had to follow through with the project and how the project was going to progress. So there was money, contingency money in there to, to cover the extra costs over time, weekends.
Wouldn't use if it wasn't necessary.
Correct.
And then I guess my, my next follow-up to that is that, you know, these boilers, it's part, it's not just the LEDs that are more energy efficient, these boilers are actually quite a bit more.
Yeah, the boilers are gas-only, high condensing, about 94% efficiency, so we'd save gas also.
Yeah, and the gas savings is certainly as significant as the electrical savings and that's why we have to combine the electric, you know, the LED with the boiler replacement because, you know, they want us to do the, they want us to do the LED lights because that's what we save on electricity. So, you know, you could just replace the boiler if you want, but you're going to pay, you know, approximately the same cost to replace the boiler and, and, and not get much savings. But if you add the LED lights, then, you know, the cost, you know, the cost is, you know, the cost to the town is more, but you get, you'll get the electrical savings and you, and the payback is quicker, so.
Right, because we're including gas measures with the project, you get a comprehensive bonus, about additional $12,000, $13,000. And the gas, the boiler is a one-time offer that they're doing this year and expires December 31st. And that's, that was a total of $200,000 that they would give you back on the boiler plant.
That's it for now.
Madam Chair. Yes, I have a question. So Robert, this is the same boiler that we initially had in the school projects?
Yes.
That was removed?
Well, it, it was originally in the, in the middle school project, which has been pushed back.
For five years, right? It was a five-year plan?
Well, probably a minimum of five years. You know, there's no guarantee that, you know, that it'll even come up in five years.
Right.
Yes, but yes, the boiler was supposed to replace. When we did the ESCO project earlier this year, their proposal that came from Johnson Controls did not include the replacement of the boilers, it did include the replacement of some chillers, which are also past their useful life. Unfortunately, you know, fortunately or unfortunately, the chillers use a lot more electricity, but as, you know, in talking to Steve Bussel, he said, hey, I can, I can live without chillers, I can't live without a boiler, you know. So that becomes a higher priority. We also felt that some of the cost estimates that Johnson Controls proposed was a little bit higher than what we felt was reasonable, you know, the payback was going to be a longer period of time, so we didn't feel comfortable moving forward with that, with that project because we felt that we, you know, that, that we could get a better price even if we pieced it down ourselves and, and Steve felt it was important to concentrate on the boiler first rather than the, than the chillers. The LED lights will also save us in, according to discussions with Steve, with the way that they will, the lights that they would give us would be a lot easier to replace them if we had, if we had issues going forward as well. They last longer, but it's, it's the startup of the, of the LED lights that causes problems. They were going to have internal ballast through Johnson Controls and these would be external ballast.
Well, Johnson wanted, Johnson wanted to put ballast, replace the ballast, but now EverSource has come up with a new standard that they want to go with and they're using LED tubes with external driver swarm because the driver is the thing that's going to fail 90% of the time. And when they're internal to the lamp, you've got to replace the whole lamp. So now they're saying, put in non-driving LED tubes, put the driver out separately. When it goes, you just replace that and you leave the tubes alone. So it's much cheaper and it's much easier to control your lighting with the external driver.
Well, there's a different type of LED light that, you know, we feel is going to be easier to maintain as well.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Sure.
Steve, I'm, I'm in favor of going with option four, but we have information from the town manager on the ROI, but how long will that, the new boiler system last?
The new boiler that we're putting in?
Yeah.
It'd be a 20-year boiler.
20?
Yeah.
And how long's the one that's there been?
It's been there for 25 years.
Right. Okay.
We could probably, at least if you go forward with a public hearing, we could probably say over 20 years, this is how much we would save. And, you know, plus. It would be in the, you know, it would be at least a million dollars, a million plus.
Okay, thank you.
Other question? Do you have a, do you have more? No?
No.
Anybody else? Can you tell me who PTE is?
Posedent O'Theron Energy.
What, again?
Posedent O'Theron Energy.
Madam Chair.
Over off Woodford.
I do have another question.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Another thing, I guess, that should be brought up is, say, you did a renovate as new in five or 10 years, how does that affect, you know, are we going to replace these boilers in 10 years if we do a renovate as new, say?
Most likely, most likely you will, but what I'm looking at is, the project will probably not take place for eight to 10 years and I don't have a, I feel it's much more frugal to, to spend the money and get the boilers replaced now, get the savings for 10 years out of them and not have to failure and have to spend three times as much money to replace them on an emergency basis. Well-planned project like this would, would save money in the short run and long run.
We're having problems with the boiler now.
Yeah. And then I guess to follow that up, as far as putting it in perspective, seeing that we're doing some work at Wheeler, you know, how old were those boilers in comparison to this?
Those boilers were put in, in, I want to say the early 90s, I think.
So it was a product on the same time?
But those are cast iron, HB Smith, a totally different type of boiler. Those boilers will get 50 years out of them. I'm still got the same ones in the high school. They didn't replace them at the high school, they told us we could leave them. In fact, I think they made us leave them boilers because they still had useful life on them.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Anything else?
Other questions? So we're faced with a, a decision that's enormous here because we're still waiting for our state budget to be resolved and we don't know when or if that's going to happen. We have a potential increase because of the state. We don't know where this is going to all end up. My concern is, we have some things that we have to do, that, some of which are going to be out of our control financially. And I understand your concern about going into another heating season with a boiler that's really unpredictable. Unpredictable, let's say unpredictable. So what is, what in your term, in terms of a timeline, would be probably the last moment we can say to get this done? So would it be in October? Because you said they have to order things and there's lead time and there's work time and we're just trying to get a better sense from, from my perspective of what's going to happen with the state of Connecticut and where we're going to end up. So I'm on the fence about saying yes right now, but maybe in October, we're going to be like, okay, now we really know what's happening.
I would probably say the, the latest you'd want to wait would be the middle of October. That would give us?
End of October?
Middle of October.
Beginning of October.
That would, that would give us two and a half months to get the boiler up and running.
Probably the second meeting in October would be the latest, the second meeting.
Okay. Okay.
It would be the 16th, I believe that's the 16th.
Okay.
Awesome.
Are there any other questions for Steve?
No question, I just have a comment. I mean, we could still move forward with the public hearing, however, at the next meeting. I'd be in favor of tonight, you know, let's, I think we need to move forward, you know, in October 2nd meeting, have the public hearing and that gives us one more meeting to make a decision if we need it.
We could do that. Hopefully we'll have some more information. If not, at least we'll have that as part of our decision-making, what we have to do.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think Scott has some happenings.
Just a few things. Bulk waste has begun today. It'll run through Monday, October 30th. All eligible residents must call CWPM at 860-793-6721 to schedule a pickup. When calling, you'll need to provide your name, address, phone number, and a complete description of the items to be collected. Calls placed by 3:00 PM Friday can be scheduled for collection on Monday. The Plainville Coalition for Positive Youth Development is sponsoring a program for parents on October 3rd at 6:30 PM in the middle school of Plainville entitled, or called, Chromebooks: The Internet and Your Child's Digital Age. Parents will learn about Chromebook use in and out of school, resources for parental controls, negative and illegal consequences of inappropriate use of technology. To register, call or write to Tina Gruigik at 860-793-0221, extension 2016. The Plainville Public Library has a few events going on this month. Tomorrow, Tuesday, September 12th, from 2:00 to 4:30 PM, come to the library for a free blood pressure check and health screening where you can ask a registered nurse some of your health questions. On Thursday, September 14th at 1:00 PM and Saturday, September 23rd at 1:30 PM, is the Friends movie matinee, The Zookeeper's Wife, which is a story of how a couple saved hundreds of people and animals during the German invasion of Warsaw. On Monday, September 18th at 6:30 PM, join staff from the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection for a presentation on black bears. Tuesday, September 19th at 6:30 PM, they are making their own bookmarks as part of a new adult crafting series. Creations will take all shapes and sizes, use cardstock, special tape, magnets, and ribbons. Registration is required, please call the library. And on Friday, September 29th and Saturday, September 30th, come support the library at the Friends book sale. Bestsellers, paperbacks, DVDs, and CDs, all in good condition at a bargain price. Donations are accepted and volunteers are needed. Please call the library for more information. Over at the Senior Center, all throughout the month, Energy Assistance signup has begun. The Connecticut Energy Assistance Program is available to income-eligible residents to help with winter heating costs. The program is run by the HRA Energy Department, which took over for the BCO and is at the same address, 55 South Street in Bristol. To make an appointment with HRA on your own, call HRA at 860-582-7490. If you need help with getting your papers ready for an HRA application, please call the Senior Center social worker at 860-747-5728 to set up an appointment. And please remember that you must reapply every year for this program. On Thursday, September 21st, by appointment only, they are offering free balance assessments. During a 10-minute balance assessment, a participant's balance level and risk for falls will be determined. If a balance deficit is found, an evaluation will be given to the participant so that they may share this information with their primary care doctor. Please call the Senior Center to schedule an appointment. On Monday, September 25th at 10:00 AM, they're having questions for the social worker. Any questions about Medicare, Medicaid, Medicare Part D, or housing options? If you want to find out any information on where to get help for Alzheimer's or home care, please stop by and see Stephanie Susi's office and you can have an individual chat with her. Now, this is for Plainville residents aged 60 years of age or older and no registration is needed. And on Tuesday, September 26th at 10:00 AM, they're having caregiving connections. For anyone taking care of an older adult, now is a good time to strengthen or resolve and exchange tips in caregiving success. Caregivers from neighboring towns are also welcome. For this event, you will register with Betty at the Senior Center with any questions or concerns. And that is all I have to report.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any comments or questions for either Scott or Robert with their report that they gave us? Okay, thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now move into our public comments section. During this time in our meeting, we invite the public to come to our podium. We only have one available tonight. Please state your name and address, you'll be given one opportunity and three minutes to speak to the council. I know there's a list up there that Carol's gathering up, so we're going to, we'll start with the folks that signed up and then move along from there.
All right, now, right now, sure.
Thanks, Carol. Okay. Okay, first on the list is Roberta Loria. Roberta.
Good evening. Roberta Loria, 18 Perrin Road. Thank you very much for the time to speak with you this evening. I would like to reiterate what I spoke about at the last meeting in voice, my opposition on any CRCLG or steering committee trail alignment or proposal that will have an impact on any neighborhood in the town of Plainville. That would include Perrin Road north of Johnson Avenue, Johnson Avenue east of Perrin Road, and any other street that may be impacted by this proposal. The new proposal includes the corner of Johnson Avenue and Perrin Road. This is a bus stop for our children. We have no idea who would be on this trail and what their intent is for our children on this trail there. This is a bus stop for our children. We have no idea who would be on this trail and what their intent is for our children, this trail there. This town had a referendum and a vote just a few months ago in June with an overwhelmingly support of spending tax dollars on school improvements. We just spent a considerable amount of time talking about improving a boiler system for our schools. How can we spend tax dollars on a school to make it safer and better for our children and yet make bus stops unsafe for those same children when they need to go to school or come home by having trails on them? If you are ever asked to vote on any proposal with trails that are not on rails, the vote should be a unanimous bipartisan vote of no. If there are no rails, there should be no trails. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Matt Zakrzuski. Matt?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Matthew Zakrzuski. Born and raised in Plainville, lived here the better part of my 55 years.
Would you please provide your address?
Oh, I'm sorry. This is my first time here.
That's good.
I'm gonna, just kind of winging it tonight. I was 36 Linden Street.
Thank you.
It's an issue to the dog park. I've had dogs for quite a long time. Better part of my 55 years, I've had several. And I know that just about every town in this state has a leash law. And it's kind of hard to play fetch with your dog if he's on a leash. And there's a lot of times I come home and I don't feel like walking, but my dog does. My knees ain't up to it. Be nice if I could just put her in a truck and, you know, take her just down the street from me, let her run around, burn off some energy. Dogs are like little kids. They gotta play. And also be a good idea for people might have disabilities or handicapped that can't, you know, really take their dogs for a walk. Be able to bring their dog down there, let them run around. You know, that's what dogs like to do. And those bits been going on for quite a while now, so I'd just like to say it'd probably be a good idea for, in Plainville, we have three parks for our kids, but we have no parks for our dog. You know, it'd be nice to have, you know, a little plot of land there where dogs can run around and socialize with each other. That's what they do. And, and dog people, people who own dogs, you know, can also do the same thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. There are no others that sign, but if anybody wishes to speak that hasn't signed, please raise your hand, come to the podium, state your name and address, sir.
David Kemmer, 38 Johnson Avenue. I got here a little earlier than what I anticipated, but I go for the dog park. I think it's a good idea. I live on the corner of Johnson and Perrin, and what I just heard about the school bus stop, I tried that 24 years ago. Dangerous street. Last week, we just had a car hit a telephone pole. I believe the mother is in critical condition still. I had somebody just before I moved in take out a tree on my property, die. Couple of years ago, the telephone pole was snapped. The traffic on Johnson and Perrin is still horrible. Nothing's ever been done about it. It is a shortcut between Northwest Drive and 177. When it's, when it's backing up in Northwest and 177, has been forever. When my son was in school, I tried the same thing about an unsafe bus stop. Nothing was done. Oh, we've also had a child lose his foot a couple of years ago on Johnson, I believe. Came down the hill, car ran him over. And not to mention the dogs that have been hit. It's not a very safe area. And I guess I should still say, I am still opposed to the trail, maybe for some of those reasons. There is a blind spot on Perrin, right in front of, are we ever going to get the runway extension or the restaurant at the airport where we took the big hill out? No, just asking, but there's a big blind spot right there on that hill. It's not a very safe area for a hiking trail in that regard. So, I guess that's my comment. I'm still opposed to the trail. If it has to go through any residential neighborhood, the people who live there, in this case, a cul-de-sac, bought it for privacy, bought it for the quality of the neighborhood, they're going to lose all that privacy. I have friends in Vermont and Colchester, they put a trail right through the residential area. Don't know if it was the city of Winuski. No, that was Colchester, or the state, or the government. But they were all offered a privacy screen, which ended up being a wall put up so that everybody enjoying the hiking and biking didn't have to look in my picture window every day. I mean, if you're going to do that in a residential neighborhood, every house, oh, look what they're doing tonight. You know, everybody on that private street, cul-de-sac, bought for a purpose, just lost it. So hopefully, you guys will offer some kind of a privacy screen, a fence, something to protect, you know, the neighbors who are now going to have to have their privacy taken away. Or maybe take out their picture window and give them a nice wall to block out the street. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Thank you. Linda Ferguson, 8 Perrin Road. I too, I'm not in favor of the bike path or walking path going up Perrin Road, Johnson Avenue. I work at Carling. And I can tell you that in the morning, very few people stop at the stop signs either coming up Perrin Road or coming down Johnson Avenue. And even when we go home, it is like scary to get to that intersection. You cannot believe the number of cars that do not stop. I realize there's a stop sign. I realize you should be stopping. But I can envision people being on a bike, going down Perrin Road. There's a blind spot when you get there because they're going to have to go onto Northwest Drive. That's going to be dangerous. You come up Perrin Road and you're going to hit that corner of Johnson Avenue. Perrin Road, people do not stop. Somebody is going to get hurt. I'm not in favor of the bike path going through there. But I am also not in favor of a bike path or trail going through anybody's neighborhood and disrupting their neighborhoods also. I also agree with Roberta that every other town has been able to use the railroad tracks. And if we cannot use the railroad tracks, we should not be putting this through this town. I don't think it's fair to the residents. I don't think we have the land to be able to do it. To take anybody's street, make it a one-way street potentially, put it down the front of their yards, having them lose the privacies that they have, I don't think it's right. I really hope that the town council really thinks hard on this before they make a decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Mr. Frangos?
Lou Frangos, 10 Furbank Street. One real quick question, and I appreciate just a quick answer on it, and I have difficulty pronouncing, but opioid? Wherever the town may be suing for?
Opioid.
Yeah, just, if you can give me a quick response. If we were to go into trial, the town, the town of Plainville specifically, and we won, and the money, that means money would come into Plainville. Where would the money go?
Be determined by the council.
Oh. No, this, I, what I specifically, I was hoping, I hear, it goes into the budget, or does it go into some medical group? Or does it go somewhere to assist the police on these emergencies?
It would be determined by the council.
That's it. Thank you. Okay. Number, this one, I'm going to be very direct on this one. Tomorrow, I'm going to the Capitol Building Projects Meeting. And they're discussing payouts invoices for cost, castle booze and all that, and it's, and I brought this up at the last meeting, for the Wheeler School. And here's where I'm having a little bit of a problem with all of this. Do we know exactly, are we confirmed that we are getting the state grant? The exact money we're supposed to get for this Wheeler School project? Has that been confirmed?
I know that we were approved for reimbursement from the state of Connecticut for this project. The absolute exact number, Lou, I don't know that, what that is yet.
Okay. Now, and I'm asking this because this is not aiming at the council. I just want to know from my own general knowledge. What is perplexing me is we have already put, and I think castle booze is an example, $81,000. When this project started, and as right of the people they voted for, good. But the town council made it a point at two meetings to say, this project will not start until we have guaranteed the money from the state. It will not start. And we've already started the project. And I seem to be correcting on it. If we haven't, then correct me. But we have already started it. That's point one, and I find that disappointing. Number two is, and this is part of the report, and I recited this at the last meeting. The project, Wheeler's renovated new project is $160,000, and that's going for castle booze and whatever else down the line. What's fascinating here is says, the town will be, will receive reimbursement for, once the state grant is authorized. If we have a problem, first of all, if we, if we don't get the full amount, because that was what we were told, the town was told, even if it's a million dollars less, we're not starting the project. So I'm assuming we're going to hit this right on the button. But if we don't, then how do we, the town, get reimbursed $160,000?
I don't have the answer to that, but I can find out for you.
You see where I'm going with this?
I do.
Thank you, ma'am. And I mean that, and I always say this, but I do mean this. I mean this out of respect.
Of course.
Okay. And the last thing too, and I just got to bring this up because, see, the middle, we're discussing the middle school furnace. And the reason I'm bringing that up is, first of all, for the middle school, I thought the project was going to be held back because I'd been attending, as Mr. Carey knows, the Capitol Building Projects Meetings. The middle school project was supposed to be, the reason it was pulled back had to do with the roofing. It had nothing to do with a furnace. So now we have a furnace, furnace problem. What's interesting about that is, I don't know, all I keep hearing about the state of our schools in Plainville, and we really must have let our schools deteriorate. We really must have let this, these schools go to hell. Pardon my French. All right? You're talking about the middle school furnace. You're talking about the middle school roof. You're talking about a high school track. You're talking about a football field. You're talking about the high school parking lot. You're talking about Old Edens Street School being demolished. You're talking about a Wheeler School project because that school is going to cave in if we don't fix it. Just what has happened? Does anybody have an answer to that?
That's a lot of questions, certainly.
No, no, those aren't questions. Those are facts.
I'll answer, I'll, I'll do my best.
Yes, thank you, ma'am.
Your time has expired, but we'll try to get to some of this, you know, as a building that is used by that number of students and people. Buildings age, mechanical systems age. Improvements to mechanical systems are always on the horizon. Energy savings are now being developed where they didn't exist back when those schools were initially built. So I think that some of these things are our new technology in terms of LED lighting, in terms of getting an efficient boiler that's going to be dependable for the next 20 or so years or longer. So some of these things are just a natural progression of buildings and facilities. They need to be taken care of. And it's not that they were neglected. It's just as they age, things have to be replaced. And some of these replacements are expensive.
I'll actually leave it at that. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
May I make a comment to one of the points, you know, I guess, speaking for myself only, I don't know how the council feels, but as far as I know that Mr. Frangos is pretty stern on the whole fact of not spending any money on this Wheeler project. I guess it should be said, you know, there won't be a shovel put in the ground. But really, in my eyes, we've been spending money on the Wheel project for five years. You know, talking, every time you talk about this project, you have engineering firms come in. They have to get paid for the work they do, so there's always money being spent. So I guess if you have to say, are we going to spend any money before we do this project? Yes, we have to. We'll never, the project will never go anywhere if you don't spend money on it. But to answer your question, yeah, I don't think there'll be a shovel in the ground if we don't get guaranteed the money. But we will have spent money to try to get the project going.
Then the money that has been spent will be useless?
Correct. That's the risk you take.
Okay. And when we're trying, so if I may, ma'am, just to clear the air, I understand what you're, I'm talking specifically about a project. When you go back in time, you're talking about maintenance, and that's a totally different world.
Back in time.
Excuse me.
Well, I wouldn't say that the money spent would be useless either, because at some point in time, something's got to feed down the wheel, whether you get reimbursement or not. It just may take longer for you to get there, but, you know, it is, I don't think that money's going to be wasted. Project's going to be delayed if that, if that occurs. We don't expect it's going to occur. It does, the problem's not going to go away. That Wheeler needs to be fixed up.
Okay. Does anybody else wish to speak that hasn't? Joanne?
Joanne Edmund, 166 West Main Street. I was going to say the prayer tonight, but I'll forego that. And Kathy, you did a good thing tonight because saying something about the 16th anniversary of 9/11. Don't start timing me yet, because I want to say, I want to say something about...
It starts when you get up there.
About, I want to say something, you did a good thing, and I want to try to do a good thing about mentioning that the Texans and the Floridians and the people out west that are dealing with fire, wind, and water flooding should be in everybody's prayer because, God forbid, that we'd have to be putting up with that here. And we have had bad storms, but nothing like what those people, I watch it a lot during the day and, because I have the time in. It's just awful what those people are going through. And all I can say is God is angry, and I feel so bad. Now my time will start because that's something, that's something that maybe you should have said.
Okay, Joanne.
All right, here we go.
130 seconds.
The dog park. I, I really want a little more time with the dog park. I'll tell you, my biggest concern is for the dogs themselves. I don't want any dog to be hurt. I don't want a person to be hurt, or a child. But I think that there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that could happen with a dog park. You never know when a dog is going to turn on another dog. You just don't know what's in their heads. God forbid that they do that. God forbid that they turn on a child or a person. But I, I think that there's a lot of, there's a lot of reasons in my mind right now not to have it because unsavory characters that could gather, it's, it's a gathering place. You talk about sociability. It's a gathering place. And, and I'm afraid of, that vaccinations aren't going to be looked at. I, I don't think that they're, it's going to be monitored in an appropriate manner. Who's going to be there all day long to, to monitor it? And there's terrible diseases that, that can be brought in, like parvo, gerardia, I think that's the way you say it, kennel cough, or whatever. And now I just want to briefly hit on the trail. Why do these people have to continuously be plagued with the invasion of their area? It is total nonsense. I, I just feel so sorry. Trust me, you would, you would hear a few things if it was coming by my house. I don't want it. I, there's no reason, it's an... As far as I'm concerned, a trail through this town with bikers and hikers is an intrusion. It's, it's, it's an intrusion to traffic. It's an intrusion to people. And right now, everybody is kind of making their way through town. I've seen it. They're, they're finding a way through. And to, to set in a... And to set in a ten-foot trail on narrow streets, I came down Pier Street today, somebody passed me on that street, can you imagine? A woman was walking with her child and a dog, and she said, what was that? I was going slow, and the person in back of me didn't like it. So, there you go. Pier Streets, Perron Road is not a good idea. Johnson Road is not a good idea. Pier Street is not a good idea. Broad Street's not a good idea. Bank Street, or South Canal, or Pearl, or Hemsley is not a good idea. Those are roads.
Did you wrap up, Joanne?
Those are streets, okay.
You've gone past your time.
So, I, I think that you better think real hard about this.
Thank you.
And come up with a no answer. If it's not rails, no trails.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Carmine?
Yes. Carmine LaLamont, 37 Bohemia Street. Now, on this rails or trails or whatever, I did a little research on it, and it was started in nineteen ninety. And I talked to an elderly lady today that knew something about this in nineteen ninety. And then, it was started under the assumption that all these railroad tracks will be abandoned, like they did in Farmington in ninety-two. Now, if, why doesn't Plainville wait for these trails to be abandoned here, then start it? Or either that, if you have the company that just delivers propane, offer them a pipeline so they could abandon their railroad. Those are other suggestions, and you don't have to bother with anybody. Either that, just wait your time till that company moves. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Art?
Good evening, Arthur Screen, 5 Cornell Street. I almost said Robert Street Extension again. I'm still getting used to it. One thing to Carmen's comment about the trains, you can't run lumber through a pipeline, and you can't run scrap metal through a pipeline, which is other uses for the rail within Plainville right now, JW Greens and Forestville Lumber. Comment was made earlier about the bike path, about how it shouldn't be put on Perron Road because it's an invasion of the privacy of the people that live there, and it's on a cul-de-sac, and the strangers, not knowing their intent, would be in that neighborhood. So they didn't support it going through Perron Road, but they supported the dog park being put on Norton Place Extension where there's a resident who's gonna have to deal with the same issues of strangers in the neighborhood on a cul-de-sac, with people, when the park's not open, not knowing what their intentions are, driving down that road, able to see into her house, into her backyard, invading her privacy and her kids' privacy while they're swimming in their swimming pool. I don't see how it's okay to, you know, invade her privacy, but let's not invade the privacy of the people on Perron Road. Listening to your work session earlier this evening with Dog Park Committee, Kathy, you started out by saying the council will decide whether or not to hold a public hearing. I think you gave the Dog Park Committee opportunity to present their side. I think that you owe it to the Roo family and the others that opposed the Dog Park to hold a public hearing, so they have their opportunity to say, you know, equal opportunity to both sides. And in listening to it, I think that the Dog Park Committee is sorely lacking in details going forward. I think the memorandum of understanding between the town of Plainville and the Dog Park Committee needs to be hammered out before you approve the location. I think they need to be done in conjunction with one another. Because I see the attitude, if you approve the site, I see that as approval of the Dog Park. And you don't have the details of how the Dog Park's going to operate, what the town's responsibilities are gonna be, what the Dog Park Committees, they even said they don't know who they'd report to. Also, I would have a question about whether or not the Parks Advisory Committee is an official committee of the town of Plainville, and the Dog Park Committee being a subcommittee of that committee, whether or not the town council really wants them out soliciting, being a town organization, soliciting for donations. I don't think we've ever done that before. I think the Skate Park Committee was an individual group of citizens that did the fundraising.
I was on that.
Yeah.
And we actually did work with the Park and Rec Committee, because we, it ended up that the skate park ended up in one of our parks. So we did fundraise for seven years. Art?
Right, but it was as a separate, it was as a separate set of citizens who formed their own committee. It wasn't a committee under the umbrella of the town of Plainville.
It was very similar to this. We worked extremely closely with Park and Rec. They were involved in all of the planning and all of our fund, they were, so.
Right.
I would say it was very, very similar.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying that there has, there doesn't need to be coordination. I'm just questioning whether or not, because it's, it's in the line of succession within the town of Plainville's umbrella, whether or not it's appropriate for them to be out soliciting funds for the town of Plainville.
I think they're soliciting funds for the Dog Park, not for the town of Plainville.
Okay. It's.
Right. That's what we did for the skate park. It was, we fundraised continuously for the skate park.
Right, but you're missing my distinction is the fact that you were a group of citizens that formed on your own, and then fundraised and coordinated your activities with the town of Plainville. The Dog Park Committee is a committee that was formed under the umbrella of the town of Plainville, and is now gonna go out and solicit funds from the public. I think there's a difference there. But.
We'll agree to disagree on that one.
Exactly. I was just about to say the same thing.
I think we had quite similar organizational objectives, and we worked with the Park and Rec people and the town.
Also, the Dog Park Committee in their presentation isn't gonna show you the negatives of a Dog Park. They support the Dog Park. They're only gonna show you the positives. They're not gonna show you the videos of dogs fighting in Dog Parks. They're not gonna show you how quick a dog can turn who's playful and happy with other dogs, and then all of a sudden, like that, go off on a dog. They're not gonna show dogs in Dog Parks jumping on children that are running and playing. They're not gonna show you the videos of Dog Parks that were closed down because of disease outbreaks and what has to be done to do that. That all has to be factored into the cost of operation. What if there's an outbreak? How are we gonna know there's an outbreak if we have dogs coming from multiple communities? With all the vets that those dogs go to, if there is a parvo outbreak or a gerardia outbreak, how long is it gonna take before the vets put it together that it's related to the Dog Park? And in the meantime, while that's taking place, more and more dogs are going there and getting infected. I think there's a lot of questions that need to be answered before you approve the location. And like I said, I think the memorandum of understanding and the approval of the location have to go hand in hand. Thank you.
Thanks. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Ask Gail.
Gail Black, Forestry, NC Avenue. I've been listening for several months about the trails and the Dog Park, and everybody who's against either seems to be against them because of safety and security. Now, I wanna let you know, I lived at Colonial Court, which is down the street from the theater, and it's a side street and all. And cars used to park on eighty-four and come through the woods, and they broke into some of the apartments. One time, they did it while some lady was in the shower, she came out and found stuff missing. Now, I started rollerblading in nineteen fifty, and I have never looked in anybody's house. I don't give a damn, excuse my English, you know? I have to watch ahead. If somebody's walking, you watch. If there's people out there, you're watching because you don't wanna fall over. And you're there for the exercise. You're certainly not gonna see anybody carrying anything that they stole from a house. That does not happen. They'd have all these witnesses. What would happen? You know, that's ridiculous. That just doesn't happen. People don't just hang around. We move, we move. We just don't stand there. You'd get run down if you do. I will sit in Unionville, because I've been everywhere. And by the way, I wear my helmet in the car on occasion, so, you know? So if you see somebody wearing a helmet here, at any rate, yeah, they had, one part I don't like in Unionville is where they go down a hill, and then you have to cross over a road, and traffic goes up that road. And I had to grab my friend's daughter, she's about seven or eight, I had to grab her on her roller blades before she went out in the street. And then, once we were sure nothing was coming, we went across. So that was hard, but, and I don't like that part. So I don't know this, I don't know this section you're talking about really well. But it's nice if you can have it as flat as possible. But now I have a broken ankle, so I have to ride a bike. Walking for me is too slow, and I don't wanna stay home and sit in my butt. Just the older I get, it's better for your body. People need to get off the chairs and walk, and that's what people do. They're not gonna go out there just to cause a problem. And over in Avon, they have, it's not on the trails, you see the houses, but nobody cares. Nobody cares about it. And sometimes, I know one girl, she goes so fast, I try to scream hello to her, and she's gone. But anyhow, so, I just wanted to mention that part. The other thing is, the Dog Park is, it's gonna be fenced in. Frankly, I think most of us animal person understand what our animals are gonna do better than we know what the humans are gonna do. You never know anymore. The humans are really unsafe. Animals are safer. I signed the petition for the park, and I don't even have a dog. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind having a cat park. Now, I did have.
Don't start, Gail.
I did, I did have to have, I had to have a police officer come because there was something going on down the hall for me, and the poor man came in, and my cat started circling him. And he said, is that cat all right? And I assume he was carrying a gun, but he still was scared. I don't know what his name was. So, you know, it could be worse with a cat park. They really just, you know, dogs are, you know, I talked to people, and I got a few signatures a couple weeks, a couple weeks ago, and people signed, and some of them said, I'm not gonna bring my dog down because, because like, well, one of them had a, I forget what it was, a more aggressive breed. And so, no, it wasn't, no, no. Yeah, rottweiler. And so, anyhow, they don't even mow their lawn, so they don't pick up the poop, so it's just as well they don't come.
Well, your time has expired, so.
Okay. But anyhow, I just wanna say, it's not safety and security. People aren't gonna go around looking in windows. It's just, you know, there's no fences in Avon, or anywhere else.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Anybody else? Okay. Thank you for all your comments. We will be moving on to our next item.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to award bid number 2018-03, 2018, loader backhoe to Northern JCB of Wallingford, Connecticut in the amount of one hundred and fifteen thousand.
Check it.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just wanted to bring up, did we, you know, this is kinda one of those items during our budget process. I know the state hasn't done anything since then, but it was kinda one of those items that we said maybe we'd hold off on. I was just wondering how the other council members felt.
Madam Chair. I'll express my feelings on it. It seems like the state is potentially gonna punish towns that have fund balance. So, things that we need, I'm happy to vote on them now, pay for them now, because I'd rather give it to our town staff to actually use for our residents than give it to the government in Hartford.
Any other comments? I continue to express my concern for the uncertainty of the state of Connecticut, which is going to directly impact the town of Plainville. And I understand that this backhoe is important for what needs to happen, but I'm in agreement with Councilman Carrier that maybe we should just wait a little bit longer and see if we can make sure and be absolutely certain what our financial condition is before we spend large sums of money. And I understand this isn't our capital budget, it's not part of our operating, but when we were first talking about some of these situations, we, at least I spoke to the town manager about making sure that our capital expenditures are not gonna happen until we know where we're gonna end up, at least some of them. This is one of them that I think is, I'm sure, necessary, but I would like to hold off on this for a little while before we go ahead and spend that, approve it.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Can I just have the bid process? How long is the bid good for?
I don't know. We'd have to ask them. I suspect they'll hold the bid.
Okay.
You know, but I don't know how long the state's gonna tell us, you know, that we have a budget either. So, I can have that answer for you relatively quickly. I'm sure we'll wait till at least the next meeting.
Okay.
And at that point in time, I can tell you if it would extend beyond that.
Are there any other comments on the motion?
Hey, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I was prepared to move forward tonight, but, you know, if there's some questions that still need to be answered, I'd be, you know, okay, waiting till the October 2nd meeting to address this again. I don't know if you wanna look to table this, or to have, you know.
Actually, I'll move to withdraw.
I mean, I.
Okay. Okay, so you're withdrawing your motion and withdrawing on the second, whoever did that, I withdraw. Okay. Thank you.
Need a motion to table, or?
They withdrew the motion, so we're good. All right, number two.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to approve and authorize town manager to enter into a letter of agreement for the EverSource Energy Opportunities Program with PTE Energy.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Could we amend that to establish a public hearing on October 2nd at 7:00 PM in the council chambers?
Maybe we should just either not vote, or, you know, table this, and then, can we add a public hearing to our agenda?
You can. It's a regular meeting.
Okay.
I mean, it's on, we've noticed the meeting, it's not on a regular meeting night, but we noticed it far enough in advance, so it's considered a regular meeting, just so you can add to the agenda.
Okay. Okay, so, do you wanna just not proceed with this right now? Is that your strategy, is to have a public hearing and not vote on this?
Well, I'm not sure, by voting on what's written for the motion, does that tie us into moving forward? I don't know if I'm making sense, but, you know, my attitude was to move forward with at least a public hearing. I'm, you know, if, in accordance with the public hearing, we do need to approve this tonight to keep the timing going, I'm fine with that. I just don't know if we approve what's on our paperwork tonight. Does that kind of, do we approve the project and move forward with it?
It sounds to me, just, and I'm gonna let, of course, Robert express his opinion, but if we authorize the town manager to enter into this letter of agreement, we are actually saying, go ahead and do it, and he's gonna sign it and move it along, so.
Except if we need additional appropriation, we have to have the public hearing.
Yeah, I'm gonna assume that the council doesn't wanna go forward. If you vote in favor of this, you're taking off the table option one, which was do nothing. I'm assuming that option two, which would increase our operating costs for next year, all, you know, without the appropriation, is not something you'd wanna pursue, so, you could do it subject, you either withdraw the motion and do it after the appropriation, or do it subject to the additional appropriation. You know, amend the motion to include subject to the additional appropriation.
Which requires the public hearing.
Or withdraw it and then just go forward with the public hearing. So either one. I think, you know, subject to an appropriation would at least send the message that the council wants to move forward with this, assuming that you end up doing the additional appropriation. We could proceed, you know, further with working with PTE, at least on putting together, and EverSource putting together. and EverSource for putting together a proposal. But we will not sign it without the appropriation being in place if you decide, you know, with subject to the appropriation.
So, should we amend the motion to read, motion to approve, subject to approval of the appropriation?
Okay, sure. I'll amend my, I'd like to amend my motion. Motion to approve and authorize town manager to enter into letter of agreement for EverSource Energy Opportunities Program with PTE Energy, subject to additional appropriation.
Second.
Madam Chair, I'll just, are we gonna do a second motion to establish the public hearing? Is that the plan?
Well, if you just tell us to do it, we don't need a motion to establish a public hearing. If you just tell us, we can tell you.
We'll just put it out.
As long as you notice it.
As long as we notice it, so, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm on the same page now.
So, does everybody understand what the motion is right now?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any additions or corrections to that amended motion? Not, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That is interesting. Number three.
Madam Chair. Motion to approve the tax refund as listed on the addendum.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any comments or additions? All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Robert, do you have any other discussions, items of interest that we would be discussing tonight?
We do not.
Okay. We do not have an executive session, so I ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.